Please, Susan Gladwick of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody, thanks for coming. We do have a lot of non-agenda items as well as the agenda to cover today, so we'll try to go as quickly as we can. All right, minutes, we have minutes for October 2nd and the 17th if you approve.
We need to have them separate because I wasn't hearing them.
Seventeen things not here.
Okay.
I made a motion and approved the minutes for October 2nd.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes for October 17th.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're still behind two minutes.
Right, September's, yep, yep.
We're working on it.
All right, and then we have payroll to approve, we have two, Union Hospital Security amount of $1,433.74 and then the regular payroll amount of $243,197.3.
I'm gonna make a motion, we approve both payrolls, one in the amount of $243,197.03, the other one in the amount of $1,433.74.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cindy, six?
Yes.
Okay. And then we need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable report in amount of $220,336.73.
I'm gonna make a motion, we acknowledge receipt of payroll claims, the amount of
Now I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have claims in amount of $560,716.31.
I'm gonna make a motion, we approve claims in amount of $560,716.31.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
And beneath that is the report for cash payment.
Okay. Okay, um, do we have any gauze cycle check requests? Okay, before we get into a regular new business, I asked Cindy, Todd, if she would come.
Is she there?
There she is. I got a call today from an energy company and he was aware that a few months ago, we had passed an addendum to our moratorium on renewable energies until such a time as we have the proper ordinances in place to allow us to go forward in a judicious manner and as other counties have as well. The meeting that was, we had, I was unavailable to do that and no one else from the council or commissioners were able to attend to that either, so we need to reschedule that because we do need to get that moving. I didn't assure the gentleman from the energy company that we would have them in place by the end of 2024, but it would be my hope that we would have the ordinances we need because those are ever pressing issues. What we're talking about is as renewable energies or the solar or windmills, those types of things approach the county and approach landowners about doing those types of things on their properties, we need to have ordinances in place, have whatever regulation we choose to have with those things, these will be placed before they begin that activity. Montgomery County had an issue where companies were allowed to go ahead and proceed doing things and then Montgomery County decided they didn't want to go that way and they were sued by the companies. They ended up, they were successful and they're suing against the companies, but we don't want to expose ourselves to that kind of litigation either. We want to have our ducks in a row before we ever head down that path, so we'll have that meeting. So I asked Cindy if she would come and give us outline of what we need to do. So Cindy, if you would, just take a minute, come up and tell us, I know you had a meeting set up before that we did not attend and wasn't available, what was that about and what do we need to do to set that up again? I know it was the state advising us on what ordinances we need to have in place, but how do we go about fixing that and moving forward?
Yeah, so it's not the state of Indiana advising you, just preface that.
Oh, I thought that was.
No, so they are a statewide agency to help communities set policy for infrastructure with, you know, renewable energies being one of those. So what they would like to do is meet with you and talk about, you know, what you want to see happen in Park County to help you develop what that policy is. So knowing that, you know, we're heavy with tourism, you know, do you want to protect as people are driving around, perhaps the perimeter of vegetation around a solar development, things like that. So they will help walk you through what it is that you want to make sure happens in your community. So Jacob Everett, he's the gentleman that came in and provided that guidance and just discussion. So if that's what you want to do again, we can invite him back at a time that you're available and let him walk you through that. It'd be perfect if Nick was here or whomever you choose to have involved.
I am looking at having a special meeting December 13th for the council and commissioners just to sit and talk about upcoming issues going into next year. We're gonna have some pricey things coming up, chiller for the air conditioning, courthouse gonna have to be replaced, that's probably gonna be in the $300,000 range, so we need to prepare for all these things. We have the ongoing jail thing, so would that be a good time? I don't know how much time it would need, but the council, most of the council and commissioners will be together at that time, would that be a good time to have that meeting?
I mean, if you want to plan for it, I think we planned for at least a 30-minute presentation from him and then the rest was discussion time.
What do you guys think?
We've set aside about a couple hours last time.
Because the council probably ought to hear that information too, right?
Yeah, and we did have a couple of council members attend the previous meeting.
I put it already here.
So that'll hold for you?
I don't have a problem with it, yeah. It worked for me, I'll make it.
Well, let's, before you get away, let's decide that right now. I'm looking at for that special meeting, I already got some council members, most of the council members are willing to meet with us and sit and talk about things that are coming up next year so nobody has a surprise. I'm surprised counties don't do that, that the councils and commissioners don't sit down together at the end of the year, talk about where they've been, what they've got to face in the next year. But I'd like to start that. I'm looking at the 13th of December and is that okay date with you guys to say nine o'clock in here, December 13th, regular workday? I would ask the custodian to come over because he'd have most information on the needs for the chiller, new chiller coming in. I'd ask emergency management to come in about the 911 when issues, things going forward, just not to make decisions, not to choose things, not to buy things or sell things, but just have a discussion about these are going to be coming up, need to be thinking about these. So if December 13th would work, could we ask and see if he'd be available?
I'll ask Jacob if he's available.
Then we can get him right on very first thing if you like that, nine o'clock, or we can do it anytime you'd like to get it, we can stop what we're doing and hear that presentation.
How long do you plan on that time?
Whatever, whatever it takes. I think it's gonna take probably an hour or better, probably just discussion of us discussing.
Right.
And so if he needs to come at a certain time, we just stop what we're doing and interject that and hear that presentation and then go back. As far as I'm concerned, whatever works this schedule works for me.
Okay.
So if we do December 13th, that'd be great.
I'll reach out to him and see if he can do that.
I appreciate your efforts before and I hate it that none of us were able to do that. It's not really been a pressing issue, we keep kicking it down the road here, kicking the can down the road, we just need to get hold of it because it's coming where they want it to come about.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's lots of inquiries coming in and just so folks know too that we're not talking about residential developments, we're talking more commercial sized developments, not trying to dictate what they do in their homes, so that's been some questions that people raise sometimes when we start talking about this.
All this is, we're gonna have companies wanting to come in and set up wind farms like yet in Bend County, or they're gonna do solar farms, they're talking 1,000 acre solar, solar areas. So those are things we're gonna have to discuss, are gonna be knocking on our door, we need to know how and what we want to do when we get there, so if he's available 13th, that'd be great.
Okay.
And if he's not available 13th, 13th, I mean, our date has to be that, if he's available a day or so the other side.
If he's not, I'll get some ideas.
We can reschedule on that. Okay, thanks.
Good. I have one more thing on the agenda, if you don't mind if I just do all of them up here?
Sure.
And so it's actually under, I think, where'd you tell me about? Oh, under department reports.
Economic Development.
For the 2024-26 Economic Development Funding Report. So you have that, Mary Ann copied that for you. So that is from the Indiana Small Business Development Center and Courtney's written a letter at the beginning. They received some grant funding to create some positions within her office to dedicate time specific to the counties that they serve and to have a presence in each of those counties. So you, some of you may have heard me mention some names of folks that work with our emerging businesses, whether it's creating business plans, just walking through what happens, how to make those connections and contacts. That position's been very successful, she's included the stacks of the number of interactions that that person has had in our community specific to Park County. It is something that I would advocate on their behalf for us to be able to continue. Their grant funding is running out, so they're trying to retain those positions serving, serving the county, so that is a funding request from them. I just wanted to let you know when you have that for consideration. And that is something, as you know, today's starting in 24, understanding that you've already set your budgets for '24. She was a little late in getting this to me, so understandably, if it cannot happen in '24, if it's something that would be considered in the following years.
Budget request is $20,000 a year for three-year period for a total of $60,000?
Which covers 20% of it.
Yeah, because they serve five counties, so I was dividing that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, now let's go to the agenda here and try to get these things, we have a summons park service board. So do we know what this is?
Um, that's, I've called about that a couple times. I've talked to their attorney since and I filed a appeal and sent to it, but it seems to just be a misunderstanding. They thought we vacated two roads and we haven't vacated.
Oh, good, okay.
So I think it'll be resolved, but he's supposed to talk to his client, call me back.
Okay.
I talked to Nick the other day when we got this, remember that Dan wasn't there that day, he couldn't drive the roads, you and I and Randy, remember that? That ditch?
Eight hundred on that, yeah.
That pipe or the whatever had broken and whatever, nobody could get back there. So we looked at it, seemed to me that day, we said that we would fix the pipe.
We did.
And...
And not maintain the road from then?
But not maintain the road at that point in time, but we did fix it. If we did that, then...
What the issue was, a lady had called, there was a, used to be a county road, it's not on our inventory, it's not on our maintenance list, nothing we maintain, but a pipe went through this and that pipe had failed and, and they could no longer get back to their property, so we went and looked at that, we had no interest in maintaining that dead-end road for whatever reason, but Randy did agree that we could replace that pipe and make it usable and then they wouldn't have access to their road, but then they would maintain that road going forward. It's basically a driveway for them is what it is. So I thought we had it resolved too, that that was an issue taken care of.
Well, the grain oil went down that right after that and we just had it go again the other day.
Oh, okay.
He did ask me if we were gonna replace the pipe and timeframe wise, I told him I had no idea.
Okay, that's what we had come up with and we talked at a meeting that we would do that, to replace that pipe and then kind of, I don't mean to say wash our hands of, you know what I mean, it's not, we're not gonna maintain it, you can have it, but we will replace that pipe because that was our pipe that failed, even though we don't maintain that road, we would do that. I wouldn't like it if I lived on a road that at one time had been a maintained road or at least a usable road and all of a sudden it's not, not usable again, even though we're not going to plow it and maintain it and all those things, but we can replace that pipe.
I think that's eight fifty, right? Is that what that was?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, yeah, all right.
And she mentioned something about eight fifty too that I was wondering, you can drive all the way back to the woods on that.
So there's no record anywhere of those roads being vacated, they're just not on our maintenance list, is what I told him, because we went through everything and the courthouse looked at it, so.
And Randy could attest to that, we have other, other roads like that too that are still on our inventory that we've not maintained because they're not used, nobody does it back there, it's just not used, we don't...
Okay, well that gives me some guidance, Cindy.
Okay, okay. From Dasa Consulting, getting a refund for fuel tax for highway and ambulance?
He, their company will now do the research and he will charge us $600 to try to get us money.
Have we done this in the past? I don't think so, but there's no guarantee he's gonna find anything.
Do we use them for something else?
Yes, the indirect cost.
Oh, okay.
The title.
Title for our indirect cost.
Do we have any reason to believe that we haven't gotten a fuel tax refund and we're entitled? I think we would want to know that if there was a refund waiting for, we'd pay my $600 to tell us there is no refund waiting for us to be out. So certainly the state would be able to tell us if we had received a refund or not, wouldn't they?
This is all new to me.
Yeah, it looks like someone just wanted to do the footwork to find out if you actually have a refund coming and we're charged $600 to do that.
Kind of like the Attorney General and claim property.
Right.
You know, if you want to hire somebody to go look at the unclaimed property list.
You would know better than any of us, how do we find out if you've got...
Yeah, I'm gonna probably see Jeff in a couple weeks, let me talk to Jeff.
Okay, sounds good.
And see exactly how they go about doing it, but I'm guessing that the records are out there, it's just they're doing the labor for us.
To look, because we don't know where to look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But whether we do or not, I could tell you if we have any unclaimed or any refund coming.
Okay, well let's just hold on to that then till you talk to them and see what you think you need to do.
Yeah, let me talk to Jeff in a couple weeks.
Okay, we have just a claim acknowledgement here from travelers.
And then the other, other two travelers, there's, there's a notice of change in policy terms and deduction are going up.
It says our property deductible will increase to 10,000, is it 5,000 now? I don't, these notices never do me any good if you don't know what it was before.
Now in the back, they talk about some, they tell what it is now and what it's gonna be and it...
There it is, there it is, yeah, on those. Wow, law enforcement liability going from 10,000 to 50,000 dollars deductible? That would just be on renewal, right, if we renew, they can't change the midstream on our contract now, right?
I'm not sure, I got the whole thing because I'm not seeing that.
It's on the back of the first page.
It's not on the first, it's on the second.
I don't have the second one.
With the deductible, aspiring deductible.
It's when we renew our policy that it's going up.
Public entity management going...
Coverage changes, so yeah, it's on your new policy is what it says.
All right, so we'll have to determine that when it comes out.
Early January is the...
Yeah.
And I don't know that we've ever had any claims on any of these employment-related practices, liability deductible or the public entity management liability deductible, going from 2,500 to 50,000? Okay, well we just need to know. All right, I have several issues here that I want to bring up before we move on to departmental stuff, so let me do that one of those. I met with LTAP again about several multiple issues and so I need to think about one thing and then we need to give me approval to move on to another one. I talked, there are a handful of counties in the state and I don't understand why we don't, I've never thought about that before, but we don't charge wheel tax on our Amish buggies. I don't know why we don't, I mean, if it's a vehicle on the road, I pay wheel tax on a trailer, I may not use that trailer all year long, but I pay wheel tax on that anyway. So I think we need to meet with those other counties and pursue how they handle wheel tax on their Amish buggies. It would seem like a fair that everybody's being treated exactly the same then, it's not picking on the Amish to make them pay the wheel tax, that everybody else in the county pays the wheel tax. And even if, like I said, even I have a trailer, a boat trailer that I haven't used in three years, I still pay the wheel tax on it every year whether I use it or not, so it's not a matter of usage, it's just a matter of having a vehicle that's got wheels on it, so that all applied to everybody, I would think, so we need to pursue that, if that's okay with you guys, I'll stop, look into that. Then I want a couple of approvals from you guys, as we know Randy is looking at retirement coming up here next year and we need to be looking at getting someone to try to fill those shoes as best as possible. LTAP is willing to, to work with us to help get the proposal together, the paperwork together to send out for applicant, request for proposal stuff. And also same thing with the highway engineer, which we have basically approved to do, we just haven't made that path yet, so I just want a motion to prove from you guys that I can engage with LTAP and create a document and then get that document put out for request for, for a proposal for a highway engineer as well as for a highway supervisor. So you feel like making a motion of that effect, give me authority to work with him?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I was just writing down.
Sure.
So yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and allow you to reach out to LTAP to do whatever they need to do to help us find a new superintendent and engineer.
All right, and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any document that we put together, I'll run by Nick first and then I'll run by you guys also, so you see it. It's just that you're giving me authority to get them heading down that road, to put that document together then, okay?
What is LTAP?
Local Technical Assistance Program, it's run through Purdue, it's a technical support for road maintenance. It's really active into research, finding better ways to build roads, build bridges. They're the ones that put on road school every year and many, many counties have a program where as their employees in the highway department take these classes, they get a pay bump to go with those, to recognize the effort that they made and they can become master road builders. So hopeful, the idea is to get them to where we can get our employees trained, to get them compensated for that additional training, so they'll be inclined to do the best they can with the better skills that they acquire as a result of doing that. Local Technical Assistance Program, it's funded out of, Purdue is funded by the state legislature.
They even let you put job postings on their website?
Yes, they do, yep, yep. I mentioned before, for us, I asked Nick to create it if he could, we need, as Jason and I were talking about before the meeting, we need to have an ordinance for festival shacks on the courthouse lawn as to when they just need to be off, they are really in the way and some reasonable, reasonable amount of time. The only one left now, there were six left last weekend, there's only one left and that's the crawler shack, but the festival is over the 20th to 21st and here we are at the end of the first week in November, so they need to go out. The real important issue to get them out is as soon as that festival is over, we need to work the law with aerating it, overseeding it, and we just simply cannot do that place where that shack is. And now that shack's gonna be dragged across the area that we did just aerate, loosen the ground and sod, so it's gonna have to be something, so.
Are you guys thinking like November 1st or whatever?
That's the day, I went this year, I was asking, that, that November 1st was the Wednesday, so instead of maybe giving it a date, if festival ends on a Sunday, we'd have the following Wednesday, if we gave them two more weeks following that, it would be by the third Wednesday following the end of the festival. Does that make sense?
Yep.
That gives them almost three weeks to get their shack out. They can just tow the shack out, put it wherever they put it, then they work on it if they have to, there's really, I just don't understand why it's still sitting there after all this time and they've had requests from PCI as well. I don't want to get into pushing and shoving people, but it just needs to go and so I think it'd make Jason's job easier as well as ours if there was a finite date that it has to be out by and then a consequence, I guess, if it's not, then we would have to hire someone to haul it out at their cost and, but then you get into breaking something inside when you're towing and so...
They charge storage fees, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we just have to take out the fairground someplace and put it there until they can come and get it.
Okay.
I hate to have to do that, but we've asked and asked, especially in this case. I've asked Don to look at whether hiring a service or buying a vacuum, deal with the leaves on the courthouse. We were notified by the town police last year that they could give us the ticket, but we, but they didn't, but we have a year to deal with it. All the leaves coming from our trees end up in the street and that's, especially off the sidewalk into the street, that is a problem for them, there's a lot of stuff going down there too, we don't understand that, so we do need to take care of that. So I've asked Don if he would want to vacuum for our mowing system now or if he wants to hire a service, right, this year he's hiring a mulching service, so we're gonna see how that works, if that takes care of the issue now and if it does, it makes more sense to hire someone rather than buy new piece of equipment to operate again, so I'll go back with you on that. We have Wabash River appointments that we need to make, I got a letter from the folks today about this. Currently our Wabash River Heritage Corridor people are Penny Cox and Phil Cox and they're not related, but they're Monizuma area. I do have a nice letter I like to read and I don't expect it all to be in the minutes, but I will give you a copy of it later if you can get it in the minutes, I think it's really nice. This is from Brendan Kearns, former commissioner, county commissioner at Vigo County, he is now president of the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission. And let me just, let me just read this, because I think when people do a good job, they need to be recognized, not just to have a plaque put up after they die somewhere. So this is from Brendan Kearns, thank you for having Penny Cox represent you on the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission. The Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission was authorized with the passage of House and Road Act 1382 by the 1991 Indiana General Assembly, so that's 30 years ago. The Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission, representing the Wabash River Heritage Corridor, shall protect and enhance the natural, cultural, historical and recreational resources and encourage sustainable development of the corridor. This will be accomplished by stimulating public interest, encouraging the exchange of information and supporting the establishment of common goals and cooperative actions of people and communities within the Wabash River Heritage Corridor. Our mission is to help local communities preserve, enhance and interpret for educational and inspirational benefit the unique and significant natural, cultural, historical and recreational resources of the Wabash River Heritage Corridor. He says Penny has served your county well, providing insightful information regarding Park County ties to our Wabash River and community events and programs. Penny is a strong ambassador and her representation and service is appreciated. As current president of the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission, I am asking you for consideration to reappoint Penny Cox as a Park County Commissioner, Heritage Corridor Commissioner. Thank you for your service and leadership to your county and support of the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission, and it's from Brendan Kearns, President. So I would make the motion that we reappoint Penny Cox to be our representative on the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Then we have a letter to sign, does that affect?
Now, you said Phil's term is also up?
Yes, he needs to alter, so we, that motion due.
Well, is he willing to do it?
I've not heard that he was.
I was gonna say, I can touch base with, how quick does it need to be done? I can touch base with you, it's up to you.
Why don't we just go ahead, if you're okay with it, and point him, if he doesn't want to, we can... Why don't we just go ahead, if you're okay with it, and point him if he doesn't want to, we can send it.
We'll redo it. Okay, let's do that. I'll make a motion. We reappoint Phil and if he doesn't want it after I contact people, do something different.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Okay, this just needs to be signed by, um, me it looks like. So I'll just have to read and I'll get it to you guys. If you can send it back to the commission, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, sorry I'm taking so long, but it's.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. Um, we have an easement that I sent to our attorney and he approved the easement. They're out on Golf Course Road. You turn off of forty-one, go to the end of a Golf Course Road where it intersects with Bedale Road and there's a gas line easement there. And that's been there a long time. So I got a letter from them. I got a call first, nice guy. Got a call from them and, uh, they asked instead of, and this is a huge company, of course, Center Point, they're, they're a huge company. They said, you can imagine having to deal, we get a hundred dollars a, a year from them for that easement. He said, to even mess with a hundred dollars a year for us, costs us more to do the paperwork than what the easement costs. So he just suggested that we do away with that easement, make it a permanent easement for the sum of one thousand dollars and other valuable consideration, um, that we just, uh, do away with that. And Nick read this and he's okay with that. So let me read it real quickly, the whereas, so you know what it is we're signing. Says to, um, all the whereas is here. Uh, the grantor is the fee owner of the property as it relates to existing easement. Uh, the grantor now desires to amend and supplement provisions in the existing easement. Uh, the recitals are confirmed to be true and correct and are incorporated into this amended easement. The easement stipulates that grantees shall pay the sum of one hundred dollars per year so long as the existing easement is used for the purpose described. That's what the existing easement is. And he would like to change that and add to it. That'd be done one time. Maybe I didn't bring that piece, Nick?
It's one time for a thousand dollars.
Yes.
It doesn't change any of the rights in it. It just, they don't have to pay the.
It's not changing the, the scripture of the easement.
No, it's just, it becomes, there's permanently the use easement there instead of them having to renew it by paying the other dollars every so often.
Yep.
So you're giving them truly a permanent easement instead of a renewal easement?
As long as it's not increasing or changing anything, I don't have a problem with that. So if you don't have the paperwork.
Yeah, here it is. I got it here. Yeah, yeah. So.
I make the motion. We're going to have to give Center Point the permanent easement on the set piece of property off of Bedale and, um, Golf Course. Golf Course Road.
Ask Nick to look at that. If that, it's got two spaces. Uh, need just my signature? Or do we need another set of lines for the, for the three commissioners?
And I'll second Dan's.
Moving second and then to, uh, to approve the acceptance of one thousand dollar payment in lieu of the annual one hundred dollar payments for the easement at Golf Course Road and Bedale Road by Center Point Energy. All in favor, say aye.
So I really think she ought to be the other one to sign it because it'd be like her testing good.
Okay, we'll get that when we get done too. So that'd be two things we have to, have to go to. Alright, while we're talking about moving on to renewable energy ordinances and the meeting with the council. So right now I'm calling for a special meeting to be December thirteenth at nine AM in this building to meet with the council and commissioners to discuss upcoming issues for twenty twenty-four. That date's subject to change if necessary to meet the needs of the gentlemen from the renewable energy ordinances. Okay?
Yep. And that was at nine AM.
Nine AM here. And that I think is all that I have extra. Make sure. Yep, okay. You might be right back. We'll get to the list here.
I guess before we all go on to departmental reports, I've got a few things here pertaining to the bridge festival. She's already on that.
Okay. Let me just say, let me find my, because I don't want to be messing with this stuff while you're trying to tell what you're talking about. To me files. There it is. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, I had discussed quite a few of these things with Nick. All in all, the road closures in Bridgeton, I think went very well. Very few complaints.
Same to me.
Most of the, most of the visitors were very happy. I mean, a lot of them was excited that they wanted to deal with a lot of traffic.
Were you able to move the one down to Webster Street from George?
Not during this festival. And, and I went down there. I spent probably three hours, over three days, back off the side road watching people. I think more than anything, I want to discuss this with Steve again. I think more than anything, if we move the barricade from Cali Street to Webster Street, it still will not affect anyone's parking except Steve's. And Steve's willing to do away with his parking and set up nothing but campers. But once people go through that barricades, then you have a lot of traffic coming up there, turning, trying to figure out the way. And I was amazed at how many more vendors, both sides of Bridgeton Road, other than about two places that don't deal well with Bridge Festival and just leave their place abandoned. So uh, that we need to consider changing the ordinance from Cali Street to Webster. But let me talk to a couple of people first about that. One thing we are going to have to address, and I discussed this with Nick, there was a couple outfits there. Vendors on various pieces of property that had brought golf carts, one food vendor in particular, and they had a young kid on it running around doing a shuttle service. I think we're going to have to address that because there ended up two of them doing it. I think they will probably need a TML. And I think we will have to set some kind of insurance policy. They'll have to be insured. So I think we're going to have to address that and that needs to be something separate because I think it just clicks with somebody, hey, we can make some cash here, let's shuttle people around and put some kid on there doing that. It's, it's, I didn't feel.
Sure.
Worked well. Uh, when I spoke with the people at the Methodist Church, they are, were closed the two Sundays during the Bridge Festival and they plan on continuing to be closed. But I will get with them because where we had an issue, they put a box out and they always have for people just donation to park. And people would steal parking at the Methodist Church. But sometimes when they would leave, they would go out on Bridgeton Road on Main Street and they was in traffic and they had to figure out how to get out. So I want to discuss with the Methodist Church about barricading. They can still come in the alley. They can still park and make their donations, but they'll have to go back out the alley the same way they were. I didn't have a problem other than, some of them got out there, got lost and didn't know they wasn't supposed to be there. We had a couple other issues and a few complaints and John may be able to answer this. The gaming tickets, do they have a TML at a set location where they're selling the tickets? They're supposed to be in a set. Okay. Uh, we had some in our building and some other buildings. They was going around trying to sell to people in people's booths and those people were not happy that we rented space because it was taken away from their sales. So that, I guess we will need to address that. I've discussed quite a bit with Julie Lanzo, synthetic marijuana. They had three occasions in four days with elderly people. They've been mixing, uh, synthetic marijuana with energy drinks and three different ones end up in the hospital. One lady for two days.
Do you have any issues?
Major issues. And we sat down a couple of, couldn't cite one. Could we do something to totally do away with that during the Bridge Festival?
Can we pick out a product and you can't have it?
It, it's highly regulated and litigated in the state currently. What I told Dan was that I was going to look into it and see what approach might be best for us. But it, it's a state issue, um, as far as regulation.
I, I guess my fault with that, our TML doesn't, have we discussed, doesn't it say?
No.
The order may or may not issue a TML.
Right.
But.
So I think.
It's going to be hard if they don't list it.
If they don't list that they're in violation and he can, it, it's the same way as far as I'm concerned with handmade. I would just say we totally do away with the handmade exemption because.
But here's what we can do with that. And I researched this. I had looked, I've talked to Barnes and Thornburg about this. The, and you know, everyone that has called me who thought they should get a handmade exemption, once I explained to them that handmade exemption was created for the little old ladies that were doing, selling five hundred bucks worth of jellies and stuff and they, they didn't want to have to pay that. Now, which I understood, that's what I was trying to protect with the handmade stuff.
Yes.
I said, if you're making commercially, I included myself in that. I'm, I'm not legal for a handmade exception, but I pay for my, my.
And I'm saying what?
I, 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 I talked to the folks. It's a ten dollar a day fee that you're paying to have this festival put on. So that handmade, according to Barnes and Thornburg, that handmade is purely up to whatever we want to consider being handmade.
And I tell them handmade slash handcrafted and that's different if it's handcrafted.
We can, we can make that be a script. That's what we want to.
Because I turn down a lot of handmade stuff.
Well, and that's the whole problem. They may have one or two little items. It's handmade and they bring in all this other.
And, and that's what I've told people before they talked to me. I really have had no one. I'd wonder, I said, well, we're just going to have to agree to disagree on that. I said, well, I can understand that, but he makes his own stuff and I understand that. But he makes thousands and thousands of dollars worth. So you're not some little old lady trying to not, not have to pay a, a fee at the, or jelly that you made. That's not the idea. And he was okay with that once we, once we got that point. So we're going to have to decide what the handmade is and what, if we want to recognize that we can, instead of saying, I think, what it's not, we can say to be handcrafted. If we want to put a, a dollar limit on how much product they, they sell for people who are handcrafting items and selling less than a thousand dollars a year or something, but if you're making more than that, you're not considering.
We've had them send pictures of what they're making.
And the tough part about that is, I, I don't care what they show you or us. I mean, it's our final decision, obviously. But the order, it does say that once you've met all those hoops, the order to make, because we had this before with alcohol years ago, it didn't say ma- shall, it says may. The order may choose to refuse to give a Gmail to someone.
And I turn people down.
And, and you have that, you have the right to do that. So what we need to know, that's a category that we can aim at. We aim at alcohol. We don't give them for alcohol, beer gardens and stuff.
I think that's probably the right approach to look at and just see what, see what's out there as far as, you know, court cases or law on it, so.
The whole goal is to make it as family oriented as it can and that's not it. And John and I had this discussion, even with the gaming issues, I got, obviously nothing against gaming. It's a legal thing, entity. But is it something that we want to be part of the festival or not?
Another thing, the last thing here that Nick and I have discussed and it's a tough one is the Port Johnson trash service. There's more and more people dropping them. I don't know. Nick is going to look at this with probably a health department.
Be a concern.
We've had people that have been no longer participating. They may have maybe over a hundred vendors no longer doing Port Johnson or anything else. So whatever we can do to.
That was a huge issue in Mansfield. They were full of unsanitary, not being done. And the one person bought most property there, we had multiple discussions on that. Uh, he had lost his service because of personal reasons with the vendor and they weren't, just weren't going to service. He thought the county should pay for that, but that's not county property. That's private property, private enterprise. That's your concern. That's not county taxpayers' concern. Pay for porta potties to make your place more attractive.
And like I say, Nick and I have discussed this and whatever angle we have to, I think it's time to try to force people to, uh, I mean,
Well, I think that'd be helpful.
I personally know some that's paid for thirty now, when they probably should have only been paying for ten, but.
And I'm glad to bring it up now. We, we don't want to wait till late summer to start addressing these issues.
We want to get all these issues taken care of.
And so we need to get Stephanie in from the health board and see what the health, state health department can say. Maybe they have a number of that for every, so many people you respect that have, you need to have a porta potty.
That's what I was going to look at and see what kind of regulation they have on food vendors versus other vendors. It's just like parking. There's regulations on handicap spots and things like that. So that this would be a health issue.
Okay.
Alright.
Those are all good points and I think we need to pursue those.
But outside of that, I, I think for the most part, and to be honest, I really think, well, I know for the fact that the South of the Bridge Festival is a big year this year, except for me.
Just to give you my, my one testimony on that, a big guy came up, big biker guy came up and we were talking. He was buying some Sasquatch candy. He'd come from years and years. And I asked him, I, I was under beating clothes and better. He said, well, there's no, no question about that. He said, he fell as family and stuff, but he said, he said, but, but he hated it because he was trying to find his way back to Rockville and he got on a gravel road. He was in a little sports car and he said, he hated that. He said, I could have bought the truck. So the solution is, it says, next year I rig the truck. Not like you can't do it, not like it's a bad idea. Next year I need to take care of my own problems. Bring, bring my truck instead of the car.
Joe Hawkins said he had a few people, of course, it's parking lots on the east side, come in and say, hey, I really want to go over the bridge on the north side. Joe said, go up here, like five lefts and get on the bridge.
Yeah.
Turn around and go.
And now people know where they need to go.
Yes.
It's going to be fine.
And we did the same thing to send them to the south side too. We just told them how to get there and most people were fine doing that.
I think a year or two, it'd be the new one.
It will, it will be. I, I, I really, I don't have numbers to tell you, but everybody that, and we've had vendors coming to buy off the bus for over fifty years. So many people go to Bridgeton every year for fifty years that they thought it was one of those things, I hate to comment, but should have been done years ago. Well, I know. I, I hate to hear that stuff, but, but they thought it was great.
We got a lot of that.
Even had a vendor call and speaker you're talking about, and he was not happy with it to begin with. He liked it. Even wanted the barricade brought back farther to include his vendors because he said people were scurrying by his vendors outside of the protected area to get into the protected area where they thought they were, they were more protected and relaxed and waited on.
I know when my son and I went to the south side just shopping, like stopping different things. It used to be the cars were coming in and there's so many people walk on that, that you had trouble, you know, but this year was great. So we didn't have that issue.
Good. Alright, thanks Dan. Appreciate that. I thought that was, and I applaud last time, you were here last meeting, but I certainly applauded Bruce and you and the people you met with down there, because it was a, it was a.
They did all the work.
It'd be a good thing.
It was, it's a tough decision to make that you've got to look at the safety of the public and figure out what's going to work best.
And, and, and give me a, give me a list of names. Who, who were you willing to sacrifice to get her to be able to have it the way it used to be, you know?
The good thing is the ones that it hurt the worst. There's been several people trying to help them out, sending people their way or can they park it rather than four hours.
It'd be a good thing. It'd be a good thing. Okay, um, let's see here. Randy, you're up. Hang on before you go. Is Chris LeBryan still here? Is Chris here? No, okay. He's on, I think he's all just.
I don't take him off.
Okay. I just, I was going to send him free because I know you take more time. So tell us what you got. Are your equipment operating yet?
Yeah.
Good.
Well, except for one, I got two trucks. I got one over at Danville getting worked on. And we got one other one to, I do like Tom, appreciate it.
You're supposed to have something for me.
Uh huh, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
I have a title cycle check. It's going to bring your claims up a dollar or two. It's for Milestone Contractors, uh, one million thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-six cents.
Incidentally, while you, while we got that, uh, we did get our community crossings grant for two hundred and three.
Something like that. Yeah, two hundred and three, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was.
So we got our full, our full stuff. So that's good. I make a motion. We have paid this out of a cycle check to Milestone for, um, one million thirty-nine thousand.
Three hundred and fifty-one, eighty-six.
That amount. Oh, fair to say aye.
Bye.
Okay.
And I have the, uh, bridge inspection contract. Need your signatures? We approved it, give it all back.
Need all of it?
Yeah.
Remember. So after we approve that, I know that's such a convoluted process. So after we go through that and we, we put our numbers down and the numbers are figured separately and come up with a, with a person for the, a company for the bridge inspection. And then you turn to the end of the state. What does the state do? They just have to prove, they've already proved that those people are viable on entity. So.
They have to sign it too.
Okay.
So then we'll have to, we'll get a contract with the state, um, for it. So, then we'll have to, we'll get a contract with the state, um, for it.
Any movement on Melcher Bridge yet?
No, I haven't heard from Lucas, Lucas, Lucas sent this to you. He needs to know about if you can possibly get AT&T, they have attached a phone line to the bridge. I don't know if they ever got permission from you. Looks like it had washed out and they fastened it to the bridge. I know back in March, they were supposed to move one over in seventy-one, South of Dana, and it still hasn't been moved. But he has talked to, he said to you, he had talked to RMC about them raking the power lines back so they can set the bridge off. So there's not a, there's not a problem with the timeline with them, but he want to know if you'd make connection with the phone company and ask them anything. Even if they just temporarily take it off of the bridge and get it out of the way, even if they have to cable it to trees or a couple of dead men to keep it up out of the water and keep it from washing out. And I think is starting to be around that fifteen to eighteen December. That's what he's shooting for, so he's gonna let you know if you could get the phone line moved in the next four to five weeks.
Okay, well, we'll try.
Yeah, that's, I, I honestly don't know how they hold up so many projects.
Is it ETT?
Yeah, with the state. I mean, that project at Dana was supposed to start in March. Now, now they can't, yeah, they hadn't moved the line, they showed up last week to even find out where it was at and they said it'd be next year for them to move it.
Well, they held up our Amis building project for years, years.
Well, we, like, eighteen bridges the last two years.
But wouldn't that line be in the state right away? State moved the height, the roads was there before phone company.
Yeah, yeah, they got the laws on their side.
Oh, I know that, but.
The last two bridges we put in there, finally, I'm gonna have to cut the line.
So I was gonna do the.
But if it's a fiber, it's, the lines is.
Yes.
They'll break it.
I imagine these are just regular lines, I imagine.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it probably is, but.
Very least, if they haven't got permission to attach it, we can detach it, leave it hanging across the, across the void town. We can take our bridge out of there.
I would think so, if they didn't have permission to hook it to the bridge, but anyway.
Shows where they have permission for that.
It's hanging on the bridge. So, he wanted to know if you were the glass side, I'll do my call.
Well, I hope somebody doesn't sneak down there some night and look all that stuff and leave it hanging, yeah?
I don't know.
Randall's do stuff like that, yeah.
But anyway, they're, that's when their plan was started, mid-December. Oh, and that being said too, they are painting the siding for the Ford Bridge.
Hey, they're gonna ask you that.
It will probably be done late next week, the week, or the week out. So, they have to make this part, I know they got some, uh, part-time, some kids that go to school half a day.
Talking about reciting the Thor, Thor, Ford Bridge, in bad need of, uh, reciting, and they're gonna take care of that bridge.
So as soon as it's done, that's where they're heading in the future.
I talked to you about a bridge, a concrete bridge, I think it's Catlin Road, that always gets, uh, gravel on and I got a call about that. I, I painted off myself a couple of times, a couple of years.
Justin?
Uh huh. Did you get to that? I got a call, a lady called about that, I guess she was a little upset, she thought of me to come to the Bridge Festival. I said, well, there was never any guarantee, we didn't want to take care of it, we just wanted it done, but, and, and I understand that, so. I'm sure they're aware, so I just wanted to refresh your memory on that, that the media get that cleaned up. I was thinking there was a cable running.
That's another phone line.
That's what I thought, but she said there wasn't, I think there is one.
Yeah, it's on the top side.
Yes, it is, on the top, right in the corner there.
Yeah, from the north, or the east side.
Whatever direction that is, yeah.
It's almost skewed, but it'd be more easterly, I think, you're correct.
So if you check in that, I appreciate that.
Now, we probably added some to it, we patched some holes right in there.
Sure.
We've been doing a lot of patching, bridge for your, it was a mess.
It sure looks good now.
It does, they helped it considerably. Three or four roads are on the bridge route through.
I don't know who did the siding at the West Union Bridge, who did that? Okay, there's, last I saw, I've been out for a couple of weeks, there's still no bad.
No, he said he wouldn't get it till after the festival.
But he's gonna get it, no, okay, good, yeah.
The other thing, did you happen to make it out there? I can't remember the name of the road I discussed with you down by Ivy Heights.
Yeah, we, that took care of it.
That was a road he had paid to have oiled, and then once the roads were shut down, the traffic was so heavy down that road, and I asked Randy if he would go out and patch it, because it took its toll.
He, he did his part, yeah.
Yep, he did, so.
Yeah, I heard he passed it about two, three days after.
Good, I appreciate it, and I'm sure he does too.
That's all I have, unless you have, have something for me.
So the excavator's up and going now then, so.
The grade home, yeah.
Grade home, yeah.
It's not on wood.
Yeah.
Hope it stays.
Okay. Nothing else you need from us?
No, nothing I'm worried about.
We're going to have that meeting in December with the council about upcoming issues. Do you want to come and just, do you have any purchases in mind of new trucks? And just to give them a heads up on before we get there, or just things they're, they're already aware of?
I bought a roller, so that took a lot of our money for this coming here. They're holding it until, well, after the middle of this month, I think we get.
How wide is it, how big is it?
It's a big.
Okay, good. Hope you haul it on.
Boom, boom.
Okay. The one we already have, okay, great.
It's holding it around all summer.
That'll make a big difference.
Yeah.
And I, I still don't think it would hurt if you would come, if you have some input on kind of what's your plans, what you was thinking for next year, kind of give us a heads up and help us out.
And Randy, I've talked, I want us to sit down and if we're gonna make changes in the Highway Department of Operations and stuff, now's the time to do it, because I'm sure there are things that people would like to do differently, but the chance has been tied for all these years. We're gonna create a new, new thing and now be the time to look at those opportunities. So, I'd like you to know, this, December thirteenth, we're looking at right now in the morning. If you can just come out for a little while and just tell us what you think you're gonna be looking at in your next, next months that you have after that, and where we are and what we need to know.
Got the roads already chosen for next year's.
Great.
Randy, can you stick around for this next person? They're gonna talk about it.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Jase Fraser. Overall, festival peaceful?
Yeah, it's very, very busy as far as crowds, but it get, went well.
Many accidents, I seem like I heard sirens, a lot of sirens.
No, just a handful accidents, quite some medical calls.
Oh, okay.
Reported collections year to date is eighty-eight thousand seven hundred eight dollars, eighty-four cents. Uh, housing out of county inmates, year to date, we've made two thirty-one, two hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents.
How does that compare to other years, you know?
I think it's right on par.
I thought it was, Gordon made up usually what it is.
Yeah, extra ten inmates or so.
Okay.
Which, like we talked about before, a lot of the counties around are getting new jails.
Yeah, that's gonna go away.
I think Bible County can always help us out there.
You're, you're aware that all the contracts are in place for the reciting and the, and the jail. That will happen sometime this spring, so that once they start, they can go straight through without having to worry about what it is.
I'm excited to see that.
Okay.
Finally, the padded cell, we gotta redo it about every ten years, so this will be the third time in my time.
You shared a number, it's sort of expensive, how much is it typically?
It was, I have them here, fifty-eight thousand was one, thirty-eight thousand was the next. The one we liked the most was twenty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. And if we strip it down to the bare walls, that'll save us twenty-seven hundred dollars, so that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Okay.
Can you send me a copy of your report to?
Yeah.
What's the determinant of whether someone gets put in that padded cell or not put in the padded cell?
Um, usually they're obviously pretty rowdy, suicidal nature, yeah.
So if they're a.
You can see where they've destroyed it.
So if they're, if they're influence pretty strong and when they come, then you put them there for holding for them, okay.
That's it.
I talked with, uh, Sheriff Holcamp, Vermeen County, about humane shelter issues, and he would like to meet with you and me, uh, just at lunch someday and see what his expectations are. Then I got a letter, which I couldn't answer, I think you got a copy too, I'm pretty sure he did, from the board, when he, when he see our contract, what, what our contract says. As far as I know.
I asked Pam.
Supposedly there isn't.
Yeah, as far as I know, we don't have. But that was just something that George Nick was put together with Vermeen County at the time when the humane job was created. So Nick, we probably need to create a contract with them as what our expectations are. It's hard to say someone's not doing their job, but you don't have a doctor prescription, so we probably need to have that.
I met with the board president a few weeks ago and, uh, she said they had a hundred thirty-some dogs in only like thirty openings, places to keep them.
Wow.
So they're just overwhelmed, so I don't know what you can do, there's really no.
What do they do in those cases?
Just try to squeeze them in, I guess, somewhere.
What are, what are we seeing?
I think they have a lot of fost, they foster them out a lot.
Are they not coming to pick up dogs when you need to come pick up dogs? Is that what the issue is with us?
I think they try.
Okay.
But that was the issue, but then we sat down and she basically said they don't have a place to put them, so.
Yeah, I believe it.
Yeah.
So what's the solution? Do we need to have another one, a larger one, or something in the county or someplace to send them?
I think we're gonna add on to our candles and, uh, just keep them there as long as we can. I know they bring us food, they brought us straw the other day.
You mean Jover does?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And then I, I bought some straw.
Sounds like a trying, yeah, way to, to work with you.
Yeah.
Good.
How many, how many do you have room for up here?
I think there's five pens, but they're as wide, wider than this table, so I thought about cutting them down into double on my size, ten, ten pens, maybe.
If you need some straw, holler at me, I'll, I'll go make some straw.
All right, appreciate it.
If you ever need food, let me know too.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate what you guys did over the festival, it all went well.
Thank you.
Julie's not here. Nicky, Nick not here.
Nicole just has a report.
Yeah, yeah, she's Nicole's.
Okay, Kristen Sehorn. Come on up, have a seat, tell us what we're looking at. You didn't hoax any of me, or did you?
No, I did not, this is good.
You did have full understanding.
Well, I'm Kristen Sehorn, this is my husband Grady.
Welcome.
Thank you.
She used to work in my office.
Oh, okay.
So Grady and I live out on the Park Putnam County Line Road, which is twelve hundred east. Um, we've lived out there since nineteen ninety-six, so for quite some time. On the north part of our property, there are two drainage culverts that go underneath the gravel road and they outlet, you know, water that is from the Putnam County side and over the course of, you know, the time that we've lived there, the amount of water that.
Is getting accumulated on our side of the road.
You know, with all of the farmers.
On the far county side.
Sure.
Or, I'm sorry, on the Putnam County side, is backing up and floods me. It won't go across the road. If, with the pictures that we have there, you can see that when we get a heavy rain, uh, it blocks the road. We close the road down. We just replaced the fence on our property, uh, which, right at twenty thousand dollars in fence.
Randy, refresh, Randy, refresh me up, I know what's, what determines, which roads, uh, boundary roads are we responsible for? The east and south?
Every county takes care of the east and south.
East and south, okay, I thought, so I want to make sure we talk the same thing.
And the Highway Department has always done a great job of maintaining our road. It's, there's the drain pipes that are there, they're just not adequate size to take care of the water flow that's currently there. And it, it just backs up into our pasture, it destroys our fence. You know, we do have livestock and we have to make repairs afterward. So I, I tried to take pictures of, and this flooding was from March.
It's coming from the east.
Yeah, we're on the county line, correct.
Your west side, so it's coming from the east.
Yeah, and over time, with all these farmers that have re-tiled their feet, you know, they don't have the clay tiled anymore. They're, they've got, you know, they're.
Dipping in those things, yeah.
Yeah, and it's just not sufficient to accommodate.
Randy, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, would a bigger pipe be a solution to it?
Well, uh, we put bigger pipes in what was there at the start.
Okay.
And we also put two in there.
Okay.
But on the other side of the road, we're down as deep as we can go in order to get flow.
Okay.
So therefore, we're taking way higher with the pipe.
Right.
So where, where does this go when it leaves your property?
It outlets across the street into a wooded area that's owned by Howard Summers' family farm. And this creek and water passage ultimately outlets to seven-twenty south, which is West Walnut, which I would call it, and Fallen Rock Road at that bridge. So all of this water ends up there.
So I guess my question, I think that's probably where Dan's going, and is the, is the pipe, size of the pipe causing the problem on your property?
I don't really, I'm not a, I'm not a road engineer, so I really couldn't say.
Yeah, it sounds like it's just because it's not going any, anyplace else.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I know that, like I said, with Park County maintaining our road and.
If, if it's not dispersing from your place any farther, it don't matter how big those pipes are there, it's just gonna put it on your property quicker.
Okay.
And that's why I'm wondering where it outlets off here, it may be best if we come out, if I come out and look at.
Yeah, that would be great, I would really appreciate that.
The bottleneck may be on down, that's what.
And again, I'm not a, a road engineer, so I don't know. I, I just do know that.
And those wouldn't be things that we can do, we can't do anything on private property. If that meant on your private property, that at the other end where the water needs to go someplace and it's not because of either just drainage or whatever reason it is, that'd be something that you would have to address. We're not allowed any longer to do any work on private property for any business, that a business exists who can do that work, which makes sense. If I was.
And I understand that.
If I was an excavator and I, I would only be paying taxes and have the county come take a job away from me when I could be doing that myself.
I completely understand that. My concern as a homeowner is, for whatever reason, the water is not flowing across the road and it's causing us problems, and it has for years. And we just invested, you know.
Can you tell me this, just if, if you've seen it before, Dan's heading the same direction, as it's coming from the east, from Putnam.
Mm-hmm.
Does it flow across the road from the front, no, 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 from the east?
Yes.
Or does it fill up and you're, you're.
Oh, no, it flows, it flows across the road and it fills up.
Okay, okay, because if it's just backing up coming across the road, that means the pipe's working fine.
It, it.
But if it's not getting across, if it's flooding from the east, that means our pipe's not letting it go across quickly enough. But if the pipe's full and you've got no place to go, then there you are too.
Yeah, so as a homeowner, I don't know what the solution is, but it's a, it's becoming, I mean, it is a big problem for us.
If you go across the street right at the moment and you go back, I used to hunt the woods across the street before it sold and it's, uh, there's a officer named Doug Cook, he's retired now. That's bought part of that fifty acres where this creek goes through. It goes to Howard Summers, I believe it's Howard, and then it goes into Doug Cook's. The ravine over there is probably forty feet deep, so I can't see that, that there's anything holding it back over there. I mean, if you go down, I used to farm both sides of that road over there, and when you drop down into the creek there, it goes, it's a probably forty-foot ravine all the way through there. Plus the other ground that I have around the corner, this creek goes lines for around and goes through, they're deeper than that over there. I mean, it's, it's a big ravine. And I think anybody, if you wanted to walk back over there on their property, Doug and them, they'll let us, I mean, they allow me to go in there, but, uh, we could walk through there. It only goes on Howard for probably, I'm gonna say it's a couple of hundred yards before it goes over to Doug and then it cuts down and then it goes back onto.
And the problem may be just right on the other side where it outlets, I don't know.
Put a contact number on here for me, because I would rather meet you out there.
Yep, not a problem.
Certainly, our, both of our cell phone numbers are on the top of this.
Yep, that top one is right there, and I can get ahold of them. I have permission to run across there, so that is, that's not a problem, if you wanted to meet me and we could go through.
I'm not for sure exactly when to meet, but I'll.
No, that's fine.
So what would it take to get graded to that forty-foot ravine you're talking about?
To get it to drain?
Yeah.
How far away is it?
Till that ravine? It's not that far. I mean, like I said, that's what I'm saying. If you cut across there, I could drive, I mean, I used to drive across there and it's, when you go back there, it's huge. I mean, it, it's massive.
From the end of our driveway, you can look and see.
So would a swell, if you had a deeper swell cut there, would that take it away? Could take that water away from the road? It sounds like it's coming across the road and through the pipes. I mean, underneath the pipes, it just can't go anywhere.
It also comes from the Park County side down the road, flows around the road and over the road to across the street. And the across the street will be entirely flooded as well.
Well, that'd be good. Look at that.
Be better if I could just.
That would be fantastic. We would appreciate that. And like I said, we're not engineers to, we would leave that to Randy and his crew because I'm sure they.
Well, and it's like Jim said, though, if it's off a county right away, there's nothing.
And I I totally understand not being able to make repairs on someone else's property.
My question would be, I don't know, the surveyor needs to go look at it. You could look at it and see. He's not a surveyor for that kind of thing.
Right.
These for for points of, um, major points for surveying. So he doesn't do that kind of great, great work. We don't have a ditch board because we don't have any ditches, uh.
Drain.
Yeah, we don't have a drainage board because we don't have official drainage ditches to deal with stuff. So they wouldn't take care of that kind of a thing. You may have to even contact D N R because D N R usually touch you about if you're changing the pathway of water. Now, if you if you did cut a path even to that ravine, if that water wasn't running in that ravine before, someone may not water, want water running in that ravine. You're not, you're not allowed to route water someplace different than where it goes. We've had that issue multiple times.
And I I see that as a valid point as well. I think this water has always crossed here. This has always been a water crossing.
Our concern is making sure that that pipe is adequate to get the water.
Yep.
And that's our concern.
And that's our concern.
And so if it is, then there's nothing we can do. If it's not, we can, we can enhance that. It's not, we got two good sized pipes there now, but.
There's two thirty six inch culverts there now, but it it's, I mean, it just doesn't accommodate it.
Which is the road behind us. They have two thirty six inch pipes feeding to me. If you go to the end of eight fifty where it meets Graves Road, it's got two twenty fours that feed from up there towards me. And then if you go to the middle of Graves Road, there's a thirty six inch pipe that feeds and it all comes to me. So all of that water's coming from Putnam County side. So it's two thirty sixes, uh, two twenty fours and a thirty six that come to those two thirty, thirty six.
How long does it take that water then to to go away?
A couple hours and then it'll go away.
I mean, the rain has to stop.
Can can you follow it where it's running to? Can you see it?
It's going in another ravine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so if it's already going there, you're in good shape.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already going.
You should get some pictures of that next time you get a big rain to show that it's already going that direction.
Better.
I probably actually have video.
Video somewhere.
That's great.
Because we've done that. We've gone down.
And I think a lot of those pictures that I printed are even live photos to where you get, you know, a quick snippet of video with it.
Because if you can see the flow into the river in the video.
Yep.
Stay wet.
No, I mean.
It all dries up. So there wouldn't be any wetlands involved.
No, no.
No.
Now, there is set aside across the street, but none of this ravine is part of any set aside.
I will at least come look at it.
Thank you.
In your imagination, just because I want to try to get my mind to, if that was a better ditch to that ravine, a deeper swell, would the water flow quickly enough away that it wouldn't back up across the road?
I'm saying if the hole under the road was bigger, it would make it through.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it sure would not hurt.
But now I'll let somebody else make that assumption. Like I said, we went around the other day to measure what was coming to us and and we're, we're getting overfitted by a lot.
So you're thinking it's not the problem of getting on your property, backing up, it's fact that the pipe's not having.
Well, no, it is. It's just.
Correct. The pipes are not.
But you think the pipes, if the pipes are bigger, it wouldn't do that.
I feel like that would be very beneficial if the pipes were bigger.
It doesn't fill up across the street like it does on my property.
What size are the pipes that are there now, the two pipes that are in there?
Thirty six.
They are thirty six.
Yeah, there's two thirty six.
That's a lot of pipe.
It also goes up and over on that spot.
Okay.
So the pipes are actually higher, they're kind of higher than the road. So it actually, it it does drop down and it it's the natural creek. That's where this creek starts. But it it will come down and then it goes back up over the pipes.
I know you can't go any deeper because you say you're deep as you go and get the flow out of the pipe that you need to. What another, another pipe?
We could possibly put another one.
So maybe that would help, help that then.
Yeah.
Because we get to a situation where you can't go any lower because now you're below grade.
Right, sure.
That's what kind of worried me too.
They're just gonna seal them anyway. You can put them too deep and you have most thirty six inch.
Because most of the, most of the rip raft that they added to the front side of those on either side when they replaced them, which it looked really good. Most of that's either in the pipe or gone down the river. So it's taking it out.
Is that something you're interested to, uh, look at and see if we can put it third and maybe get that certain before spring comes, before the rains come, we get that done? That'd be great.
That would be fantastic, yeah. Yep, absolutely. Well, we appreciate your time.
If not, if it doesn't help, then you just gotta dig the pipe back up and bring it back and put it in the yard. Give it back to us then.
That's fine too.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Well, it sounds like Randy's willing to try that. See that's, so we we won't go any lower in grade, but maybe we add a little path for the path for it to go.
Of course.
Maybe that could do that. We'll work on that.
Thank you. All right.
Andrew. All that you see sitting back there, Andrew, how are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm good.
Have a little bit of a packet about our company here.
Isn't it tough? Let me know what you think about that. It's tough seeing you come as an adult doing stuff, man.
So I'll keep it, uh, short and sweet. So Andrew Gower with Gordon Flush Company. We um, are a Canon, Rico, um, lights, mark, printer, copier dealer. So we've been in Terre Haute for about forty years now and I've been with, uh, used to be called Indiana Business Equipment and Gordon Flush partnered with us a few years ago when our owners retired. And we've, uh, I've been in Park County for almost ten years now, calling on on different customers, a wall of sloths and a a good customer of ours. And then, um, I can sit here and talk all day about how great I think Gordon Flush is and our products and and our service. I think, um, one thing that would be important for you guys in Park County is a great example that relationships and people still matter. And, um, talking to people like Janet Crouch at North Central Park and getting kind of references would be, would be a great place to start, but, while I stopped in here today, I talked to the auditors and they said, you're just gonna have to get in front of the commissioners if you want to be involved in in kind of the bid process.
Right, we've got, what's got me working with now? Does all your stuff?
Rico.
It is Rico, okay. I think it was.
No, so, um, I won't, won't bag not to any competition, but Rico Direct is, we are a Rico dealer, but the difference is we're family owned.
Right.
So we're independent, um, Rico dealer. Rico Direct is, works for the corporation, is a direct seller, so, um.
Well, we certainly recommend your, your proposal. Uh, we do those contracts yearly. I don't know where we are in our multi-year. Coming up shortly.
Yeah, I know there's like the Sheriff's Department. I've worked with Kyler for many years and, um, they were on a separate contract and I know that the county kind of had a more convinced country, more machines on one contract and, I just want to be, I just want to be involved essentially.
You do whatever you need to do to get the inventory of what machine we have and if I goes on to bring a proposal to us, then we would certainly look at that as as a.
Do I go through, uh, your office?
And I'll lead you to the right person.
Okay.
We have all of the county. We got Sheriff's Department, Highway Department, we got things, Hammonds Department, extension office.
This office.
Their, their place, so.
Yep, so again, we, we have experience with a lot of Park County folks, but then, um, Clay County Government, Vigo County Government, A to Z, we handle every office, so we, we have really good references as far as.
Well, we look, look forward to your proposal from you.
Okay, I appreciate it. And sorry to.
Are you still high school or you are, yes?
I've been literally almost ten years here since I graduated.
His mom used to work with my wife at Doc Swains for, for years and I've known his dad for years, so. Good to see you doing stuff. Yes, I certainly get a proposal together, bring it to us because we're, we're gonna hire somebody to do that stuff.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. And I don't, I'm gonna be rude, but I do have to go coach my son's practice, so I'm gonna look out for him, so.
Just get out of here.
All right. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Andrew. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Craig.
Well, I got, Dan, Dan made his rounds like he said he did, round, round the thing. And I put everything that I could, I could see and talking to people. Uh, when they closed the road, it's up by my mother-in-law's house. The road starts at, now by Mill, I think it's Mill Bridge or something. That road is seventeen feet. Up by her house, it's eleven feet. There's a thirty foot right away there. And 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 the cop, police officer, they put the barricades in, which is good. But people just kept running around and they're going to the police officer and he was from Vermin County, very, very nice gentleman. He would turn them around and stuff. I, I have a suggestion I'd like to get put forward is to go ahead and make that road wider, like add seven feet to it. We own a right away, the county does. Instead of that officer sitting there, allow traffic to go from Joe Hawkins' area around to the other side of town. Was, uh, the new guy that put the new parking lot in?
Kelly.
Yeah, real nice guy. I spent a lot of time talking to him. It would help him, okay? Uh, as far as I think, you know, at first I looked at it like it was, uh, crazy what he was doing, but that's when we, we had talked about leaving the, the roadblock all the way down by the Baptist church. We had a first meeting, right?
Well, people suggested that.
Yeah, yeah. It would, it would, it would suggest it anyway. And, uh, that would allow him to fill up. And just like, uh, Dan was wanting to move the roadblock back further to Webster Street, that's where I am. I usually park about thirty cars. If I park them, I I park them. But what I'm seeing is if we could, just like, one problem I've seen for years in, in a town, they put like crosswalks, like, take the time and put crosswalks. I I'd even do it. Like they're, they're, they're leaving cases and direct them to one, one side and make a map of, of the areas where they're, they're at and where they can, uh, what, what they can get to by, by parking there. And and that way, you can make like single road, there's enough right away. The right away going through town is forty five feet. And instead of, uh, because if you're shutting off of Webster Street down, down to where Kelly Street is, you have the Sanquin Eddie's, they park cars, uh, the Browns park cars, they park cars up on Beeler's Place. And if you would like put some kind of rope thing and and make, make the people that run these parking lots pass these maps out, says, hey, this section is for this reason. You get passed here. That we will, because we actually, the, the thing has grown like, I, I really thought this year it would be smaller. I thought maybe the pandemic got a lot of people out, but it didn't. Because if, if you back them up, they're, the Browns will get none. We done shut off, uh, Hawkins and I think Hawkins would be able to open up if we let the traffic flow from one end to the other.
I, I think what you're saying is, I understand what you're getting at, but part of the issue was the foot traffic starting at the fire department, actually starting at Allen Street up and all the way down to including your old entrance, Joe's old entrance to that parking lot is thick. You can't even hardly walk through.
Well, it's about right where, yeah.
And that's what we're trying to do.
After that, it fiddles out.
Well, I, 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 I think that if the, the people at the parking lots would explain to them like the, you know, uh, have an officer there making it so many go this way, so many that way, because a lot of people wanted to go to Mansfield. I, I personally took people over to forty one. They're, they're good people. They were elderly. They didn't know what to do. And where the guy put the new parking lot, right next to it is a huge food court. And it's closer to town. There's not all that walking, like there's, somebody would say, there's no parking uptown. Well, if we could feed him people, handicap, that'd be great for handicap people that only could go so far. It'd, it'd make it so much better for the areas. And even down there, you, you could do, do like a rope line when they leave you, 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 you as a person that's in charge, you make, make them responsible to say, we're gonna give you like two, two whiffs of an officer direct traffic right there. Gilstrap used to stay by the bridge years ago and direct traffic. Because that stretch between the fire department and downtown is probably the, the kill zone, is why I'd call it. If you're gonna get hit, you're gonna get hit there with cars right there. But that allow that, then, then we still have, uh, uh, the Shop Myers and Lee bottleneck. Maybe Dan could talk to some of the people that have vendors that are parking way over here or across the bridge where they could come in before nine o'clock. They're gonna be there all day. And I, I, I really think you could work something out with them and they would get the business.
I have spoke with both of those and actually Shop Myers was pretty well full every day with vendors parking.
Yeah.
And any of our vendors that camped there, camped, we actually sent them to Lee and.
Yeah, because I, I, I went down there about every other morning and, and talked to them. And them, them two girls, regardless whether they don't fill their parking lots up, somebody pulled in there to park, they told them you won't be able to get out after nine o'clock. I mean, they didn't have to do that. They could have just filled it up and that would cause one hell of a bottleneck. Okay?
Okay.
And, and, you know, I'd like you to take that into consideration.
We will.
You know, and if, if, uh, doing some work between where I own and the Cousins own below me to, to make it use, usable, part of my yard or whatever, I, I'd be willing to do something there because I, I, I think that way, and because you go further down, down towards Matthew's place and then the, the right, the right away is thirty feet.
Okay.
And there's that bridge. And I asked before, and I'd like to ask again, once they smell Bridston, they, they try to go around that curve like maniacs. It's just like the, Dan, he'll tell you, there was a lot of young kids driving. I don't think anybody, I don't know if there's a citation or whatever, but they, they shouldn't have been there.
I'll touch you with some later.
Thanks, Nick.
They, they shouldn't have been driving through town.
No, they shouldn't.
And that, that needs to be corrected by the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, that'll all come up when we have a evaluation meeting on it and see what changes we need to make.
And what we'll do, we have to pass orders to the sheriff.
Oh, I understand that. I understand every bit of that.
That's all.
Okay, well, thanks, Jess. Appreciate it.
And what, when you mentioned the toilets, I got one other thing to say about the toilets, okay? There, there is, I, I have tried to shame everybody I could at my end. I, I parked thirty cars and put a toilet in. One parking lot's got an old house, okay? The, the case is finally put two in, one for them and one for the tourists. They're cleaned every day. You go down to the next place where the school is, he's got paint toilets. He's got, and there's no, no place from there until you get onto Brown's. The Browns serve food and, and they, they have two or three there. Maybe four.
That'd be like we talked about all ago. That'd be see, uh, Nick's gonna check to see what the state's requirements are. That's, that won't be county issues. That'd be local landlords and vendors issue, but we won't know what the requirements are until Nick checks into that and we'll give it to the board and see what the, what the requirements are.
But you, you, you understand what I'm getting at. That, that, that way, I mean, I would even kick some cash in to help subsidize the two parking lots that lost business. I, I go down there every morning and see them.
Yeah, well, that's the way it would have to be, man. Won't, won't be any county dollars going in porta potters.
No, no, it doesn't need to be.
That's what it needs to be, is people just get organized, get together and work together and try to figure out how to, how to do that.
You know, I mean, if there's an ordinance passed that you have this much, it's good.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
All righty, um, Harold Binsken's not here, but his concern was about the, the Mecca School falling into the roadway. But that's not our issue. That's, uh, all of Mecca.
He just needed someone to talk, complain.
Yeah, and I understand. It's frustrating.
It is an issue. It's gonna be tough for him. It's just one of them things.
No money there.
No, the money doesn't do it.
Because he said Mecca doesn't have the money.
No, no, they don't.
And, you know, they.
The bad part is, it takes them to some point, tell them you don't have to do this.
When you take your building or something like that, it's good to start with if something happens. I mean, they go up to the point they have no money.
Okay, that's all I got. Anybody got anything? Got anything? Public comments? Yes?
I'm sorry, I hate to drag us on.
No, no, it's fine.
Um, Hamilton Center would like, and I can email this to you because I didn't ask, we would like to, um, see if you all as commissioners would um, sign a letter of support. It's not a letter of any kind of commitment. It's just saying that you support Hamilton. It's not a letter of any kind of commitment. It's just saying that you support Hamilton Center, that we've been a worthwhile agency in our community here in Park County. The state of Indiana is moving to become a CCVHC site state, which is a certified community behavioral health site. So we are wanting to be a part of the state's application. Hamilton Center as an agency is wanting to be a part of the state's application for this process. And in this application process to the state, we need letters of support.
When do they need to be in?
Ideally, Thursday is the day that we're putting everything together and getting it out the door. So I can email it to you. I printed one for you. This is just a draft.
Yeah, let me see that. I need that. I need to sign something that...
No, absolutely.
That says we approve more than we know to approve. It says, "It is with great interest that I write this letter of support for Hamilton Center Inc.'s request for services submission regarding the statewide expansion of the Certified Community Behavioral Health Plan model. Hamilton Center is uniquely positioned to be a part of the state's application for a demonstration program. I am aware the CCVHC model will allow robust expansion of the behavioral health system in Indiana with an emphasis on crisis services aligned with 988 integration with primary care and broadening access for all Hoosiers, particularly those most vulnerable. Hamilton Center has been a remarkable community partner in central Indiana since 1971. Their integration with all segments of the community has promoted strong collaboration and provided access to the quality care of 13,000 consumers spanning a 10-county area. Most recently, the organization added 24/7 crisis services. A federally qualified health center look-alike, three certified opioid treatment programs, and has been selected by HSA to operate as a CCVHC since 2020. It is with great enthusiasm that Park County Commissioners support their desire to be a part of the state's demonstration program." I am okay with saying that it is with enthusiasm that we, Commissioners, support your desire. I don't know that I have any information to be able to say that you have promoted strong collaboration and provided access to quality care for 13,000 consumers. Those are just things that we just wouldn't know. And that's why I had a question about the letter. I don't know if you guys feel the same thing or not. I don't mind saying that our experience has been in our county that Hamilton Center has worked at being a good partner. And I, as we've talked before, to be perfectly candid, it wasn't the case before, because we never heard from them before. We were told by the state, "You're gonna send this much money to these people and that's what you do."
In the last few years, it's changed a bunch as far as...
And I think it's because of you folks.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would not be opposed to constructing a letter, but I don't think I'd be comfortable signing this because I don't know those facts, to be what they are.
And that's just a draft letter. We sent it, I mean, like, I know Jason's gone, but we sent it to the Sheriff's Office, just a draft.
If it's okay with you guys, I could draft a letter saying that our experience has improved greatly in the recent years of working with Hamilton Center and we support their desire to be part of the state's demonstration program.
And I feel comfortable allowing you to do that and sign it on our behalf, on mine. Chris will have to speak for himself, but I don't have a problem.
Why don't I draft something? I'll send it out to you. You guys like it, then I'll just sign it. And I can email it to you.
Do you want me to remind you?
Yes, please.
All right. As far as supporting, I mean, I don't have any problem supporting.
I don't either. I just kept on saying those things that I don't know is true. I don't know about the 13,000 people that you deal with and how successful. I just don't know those things.
I understand completely.
Yep. But I can certainly say that our relationship over the years has grown and we've seen a marked improvement with your participation with the Commissioners as far as informing us as to what you do and how you do. And we think you'd be, and we support your intent to be a part of this demonstration program, so I'd certainly do that.
Thank you.
If you don't, hear from me in a couple of days.
I'll email you.
Good idea. Let me give you my cell phone. In fact, you can text me. I have so many things going on. Well, we went through that list a while ago. Phone number 765-363-1180. Just text me as a reminder, and I won't think you're being pushy whatsoever. So don't worry about nagging me. Nag me, because if I don't, it won't get done.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I'll, can I have a copy of that, one of those and I'll use, I'll use what parts of that I can and then we'll get that done and taken care of. I do appreciate what you do and you are in a whole different world than we are in. We have no way of knowing your successes or failures. We just have to trust that you're doing what needs to be done and that's why we have you. Fair enough. Send it.
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Fair to say aye. I'll adjourn.